Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to today's Lincolnshire Health and Wellbeing Board meeting. For those of us in the council chamber, I'd like to advise that there won't be a fire drill planned for this afternoon, so in the event of the fire alarm sounding, we need to leave the council chamber through the rear doors, through the reception and assemble in the car park at the front of the building and await further instructions. Can I please remind all members to ensure their mobiles and devices are on silent? If you wish to ask a question during the course of the meeting, can you please raise your hand and Alison will make a note of those who wish to speak. Apologies for absence are the first item on the agenda, so Katrina.
Thank you, Chairman. We've received apologies for absence from councillor Mrs Bradwell, councillor Maersk, Heather Sandy, but we have Linda Dennett here as her replacement member, Andrew Morgan, Julia Debenham and Professor Neil Juster. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. We now move on to declarations of members' interests. Do any members have any declarations they wish to declare?
No.
No. Okay. Item three are the minutes of the previous meeting which was held on the 5th of December 2023. To confirm that those meetings, those minutes are correct, can I have a proposal, please? Thank you councillor Bockett, can I have a second? Thank you councillor Gray. Thank you, that's the minutes agreed. We now move on to item four, which is the action update. And as far as I'm concerned, can I just have a show of hands to see that you agree with Likewise, the, moving on to item five, is the chairman's announcements, I'm not going to go through them and I assume that you've read them. Did anyone have any questions? No, thank you. And I would just ask you to note that, as you can see, that appendix A was in response to a question that came from, I can't remember who it was, but it was, it came from the last meeting that we had around the mental health offer for young people, the online cooth offer. We now move on to item 6A, which is the Joint Health and Wellbeing Strategy. This item was circulated as part of the Agenda Pack pages 23 to 54, and the item asks the board to approve the Joint Health and Wellbeing Strategy. I'm going to invite Alison Christie to present the report, and then any questions from the board? Alison.
Thank you, Chairman. So yes, bringing forward today the final Joint Health and Wellbeing Strategy. So for the past year, we've been doing reviews since publishing the Joint Strategic Needs Assessment last March, and we've brought several papers over the course of the past year detailing the progress we've been made to doing that, including the outcome of the prioritisation process that we ran in the spring of last year to come up with the five priorities that are now in the new strategy. So the appendix B in your pack to this paper is the updated strategy we're asking for you to approve. This, along with appendix A, will be published on the Lincolnshire Health Intelligence Hub alongside the GSN A, and our proposal is to publish it as a suite of documents along with the Integrated Care Strategy, which we'll be discussing at the next meeting. So in the new strategy, the five priorities, includes the details of the five priorities that we've broken down by a life course approach, and it sets out the outcomes and the sort of objectives that we're setting under each of those areas. The strategy went to health scrutiny in February, and their comments are attached in appendix C, but broadly, they were supportive of the strategy. So unless anyone's got any actual questions.
Thank you, Alison. Okay, are there any questions as far as this is concerned? I think you've probably seen it in various iterations before, so it's just updated. And what I probably should have said at the very beginning, we have quite a heavy agenda. I'm grateful to you for the taking note of the fact that questions coming in beforehand, if there were any at all. So I'm not skating, well, I am skating over things, but it's only because we've got them in an order so that it's easy for everybody else to get right through to the items at the very back of the agenda. So can I go, as I say, any questions? No. Can we go to the actions that are required on page 23? And those are to note, to approve the joint introduction document, to approve the Joint Health and Wellbeing Strategy for 24, appendix B, and to approve the publication of the joint introduction document and the Joint Health and Wellbeing Strategy 2024 on the Lincolnshire Health Intelligence Hub alongside the Integrated Care Partnership Strategy. And I would encourage everybody to have a look at the Health Intelligence Hub. It's where we're going to be keeping, putting, storing all of the information that's relevant, particularly in and around health and social care, and indeed, it will be public, so it's for anybody to use that information from. So can I have a proposal, please, for this paper? Thank you councillor Bockett. Thank you councillor Gray. All those in favour? All those again, any against? Any abstentions? Thank you, that's agreed. Can we now move on to agenda item 6B? This is the most exciting paper on the planet, isn't it? This is the Pharmaceutical Needs Assessment 2022, the supplementary statement for 2024. This item has been circulated as part of the agenda pages 55 to 76, which asked the board to approve the publication of the PNA 2022 supplementary statement, March 2024. I'm going to invite Tony McGinty, consultant in public health, to present this item, and then invite you to ask any questions. And then we'll move on to the actions required. So thank you, Tony.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everybody. Board members will be very aware, I'm sure, that it's a statutory responsibility of the board to periodically produce a pharmaceutical needs assessment for Lincolnshire once every three years, is the regulated kind of battle rhythm for producing these. But we are also required, to some degree, to track any changes in pharmaceutical provision over the lifetime of a three-year needs assessment, and if we feel it's necessary to do so, to issue a supplementary statement of any changes that we think might be significant or useful to people wanting to use the PNA. So for the purpose of this report is to identify that there have been a number of changes to pharmacy provision in Lincolnshire over the recent period, certainly since the PNA was published in September 2022. And having reviewed those changes and looked at the effect they have on accessibility and gaps and so on, we are recommending that the board does issue a supplementary statement. Just for absolutely, absolute clarity, supplementary statement is simply a statement of fact of changes that have occurred, and it seeks to just correct those changes in the main published document that was published in September 22. Gives no opinion at all about the need for pharmaceutical services, it simply updates the facts. What we have done, though, to reach the decision that a supplementary statement would be adequate in this case, rather than restarting the pharmaceutical needs assessment, is by the magnitude of the change that we've noted occurring. And our assessment is that whilst the changes are, the changes are significant enough to warrant a supplementary statement of it, and we've identified some of those key changes in the, in the body of the paper, it, the change to accessibility for pharmacy for local people hasn't changed significantly enough to warrant restarting the PNA. Again, just to note, the PNA three yearly cycle will restart again in autumn this year anyway, in time for republishing in 2025. So our recommendation is that we issue a supplementary statement, which is the statement of fact that is in appendix A, and that the board agrees to let us publish that as a measured response to some of the changes that we've seen in pharmacy provision in Lincolnshire since 2022. I'd probably end by saying that this, this in no way is meant to reflect the really big developments in pharmaceutical service provision that are occurring at this moment in time, so hence, I think the slightly underwhelming feel of the report, councillor, will, because it is simply a statement of fact for now, rather than a reflection on what's actually going on in pharmacies. Thank you. Happy to take any questions, of course.
Thank you, Tony. Any questions from anyone at all? No? Okay, thank you. If we can then go to the actions required, and we are asked to approve the publication of the needs assessment supplementary statement as presented in appendix A. Can I have a proposal, please? Thank you councillor Bockett. Can I have a second, please? Thank you councillor Gray, or councillor Rawlings, even, thank you. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Thank you, that is agreed. We now move on to the NHS Joint Forward Plan, the Delivery Plan, which is, is a discussion item. And I'm going to invite Pete, Pete Burnett, the Director of Strategy Planning, Integration and Partnerships at NHS Lincolnshire, to present the report, and then we'll take the actions when you've finished your report. Pete, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So the board will, as you remember, or will be aware, that the NHS in each integrated care system has to produce a joint forward plan before each financial year, and that came in with the 2022 Health and Care Act. Last year was the first year that systems across up and down the country had to produce their joint forward plan, and that gave an extension until the end of June to get that completed. So this time last year, we started on that, that process, working with Healthwatch and partners within the NHS and the county council, and the third sector producer, joint forward plan, which was what we aimed to have, was a, for a public facing document identifying the kind of core aims and ambitions, what we're trying to achieve within the NHS, as part of the integrated care system for the next five years. That came here in June, and the board supported it, and sort of, it kind of, it took into account the GSN A and what we needed to do locally to address our health needs. Since then, we then worked within the NHS developed multi-year plans, and what is presented to you today, and which we circulated very early, was, was the document that has, which isn't meant to be public facing, although it would be published for the public to see, has a detailed plan of all the years the NHS is working on over the next five years, multi-year plan, how we're going to move that strategy forward. So we circulated it early, so it wasn't completely finalised, there were some typos and some anomalies we've been working through since. But we circulate it because we appreciate it's a hefty document, and we wanted the board to have a chance to have a read through, bring any questions to us before the meeting, and have a chance, if they have anything to bring to the meeting today, to take there. The aim really is to, is to have that as transparency with the public, so they can see what our kind of endeavour is over the next, over the coming years, and when we publish our operational plan, that will go alongside this for the year as well, which also takes into account the NHS mandate that comes down from the Secretary of State and what the NHS has to deliver each year, and NHS England will kind of, will ask us to do. So that's where it is at the moment, so it's presented to the board for comments and reviews. I'm really clear, we're trying to take in the GSN As, and we'll be taking true account for them, and the Joint Health and Wellbeing Board Strategy, and yeah, welcome people's views before we finalise it in the month. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. I'm going to have a go first, question wise. On that, the headline ambitions, it's on our page 87, but the headline ambitions, the first one is, by April 24, over 40,000 people will have had a what matters to me conversation. How's that being measured? I mean, we're nearly at April 24, you know, have you had those conversations?
Yeah, so the personalisation programme records the kind of, through that, through general practice and through information to get on the shared care record on those conversations taking place. So I don't know what the exact figure is now, but it is measured through the work they're, they're doing, so it is something that we, it's actually mandated to us from NHS England to have these conversations, and clearly, the importance of that is, is being about person centred healthcare and doing that. So it is, I can't, how the mechanism entirely works, I can come back to on that one, but yes, it is a measured, it's something we already measure and have been measuring for a number of years.
So if I could just follow on from that, then, you know, where will, say, a member of the public find that information after April? How's it being reported back?
So a few mechanisms, one through the, which I know in the next meeting around the Integrated Care Partnership, the strategy there has personalisation, it's, we'd expect some of that to come back through. But there's also, it's, there's a webpage called It's All About People webpage, that identifies all the personalisation programme and provides all the updates on that, that is a, it's a Lincolnshire wide webpage, it's our webpage locally, and it has the information on, on how we kind of do the different elements of the personalisation programme.
Thank you. Any other questions at all? I was just going to say to you, there is a typo, there's a typo on page 346, I'll leave it with you.
Thank you, Chairman. Obviously, I'll bring the comments from, from all the districts on this, so, I mean, overall, there's a big, big support for the plan, and it's obvious, it's the NHS plan, so it's going to be NHS focused. But it's just a question with regards to, as we move into alleged integrated care and working together, do we think the way some of the things are written actually take that into consideration? So if you go, for instance, to page 87, and you've got, you know, targets, increasing adults on obesity register, and you've got diabetes, so where other agencies, i.e. districts and other agencies, are actually doing work that runs alongside, it doesn't really seem to, you know, measure that there could be a way of, of other, for instance, councils helping with that, it seems to be as if it's written as an isolated target for the NHS, rather than a joint activity.
Yeah, no, so, thank you very much for your comments. So I think that's the nature, unfortunately, of the national agenda around the different documents we have to have in local systems, and as a coterminous system, we have, one has a Wellbeing Board Strategy, an ITP Strategy, and a Joint Forward Plan Strategy, and quite understandably, we go, how do these relate together? So I'd say actually that would be covered in the Integrated Care Partnership Strategy, but they have to clearly link. And one of the works we are doing now to take this forward, work with Derek's team, is how do we get outcome measures that kind of pull, that integrate the actual three documents together, that actually has a system we're measuring, this is what we're trying to do, because we do have to legally have the documents, but it does lead to that kind of, almost a fragmentation of the approach you're doing, which it isn't done in that, you don't deliver it in those silo ways, but it kind of leads to that kind of thought by, if you look at each document, and why they're written, why that happens, unfortunately.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's the part of the point as well, is that as we, how do we combine them? Because if they are just, you know, it is said, I mean, I've even said it, I've said it in this room before, that we've got strategies and strategies and strategies, and where's the delivery, and where's the measure, and who's the gatekeeper, which we should overcome through integrated care, but is it? And, you know, it's, it's a shame that the documents have to be written almost entirely separately, because it does look like there is individual target setting and individual target measures, rather than that joined up approach, and that still, unfortunately, for anybody just casually reading through the documents, that's the impression they can take away.
I think you're absolutely right, and I think the sooner that we get to that, and not just us, but elsewhere, you know, as soon as we get to that, that system way of working, that will be all round for all of us, or the system way of reporting, rather probably, I should say, will make, for me, quite a lot more sense. You're absolutely right, that it just feels a bit still like we're twin tracking, doesn't it? But appreciate that Pete's got to do what he's, he's told by NHS England, as indeed John has, but it's just that, come on, we're a system, aren't we? So, John?
Yeah, I agree completely with, with the sentiments. I think there's something about recognising the way we, we just have to structure the strategies at the moment, even though it's not how we would like it to be, something about, and Pete, we've had several conversations, haven't we, Sue, about just how we put a sort of proper rap around all of that, so that, you know, if any of, any of us were to be sort of, you know, stopped in the, in the street, and, you know, 30 seconds, you know, what are you guys actually doing together here? We'd all be able to tell the same sort of story, really, often try to distinguish between the way we have to write strategies to satisfy others in the bureaucracy that we're part of, and distinguish between that and the partnership working that we've actually got in place in the county. So for me, I think the relationship that we have and the partnership working we have, whether it's district council, NHS, county council, third sector colleagues, care sector colleagues, is, is pretty strong. Obviously, we need to continue to build and, and develop that. So I, I think the sort of problem we've got is actually more about the way the strategies are having to be structured at the moment, rather than, how can I put it, the health of our, of our, of our partnership that we've, that we've got. But it is, it is a point of continuous frustration, I think so, isn't it?
Yeah, something like that. And I think it's, it, you know, when we get the opportunity, councillor I, to, you know, with our politicians higher up the food chain, then that's, you know, this is the case that we've got to make, is that, you know, where it works for some of us, they, they allow us that, that bit of bandwidth to be able to work in a way that's best for Lincolnshire, and, and we're getting there, and you can feel all the time that, that the language is, is changing, but it's, it's still not where I think we'd all really quite like it to be yet, but work in progress. Any other questions? Councillor Rawlings?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, just a couple, if I may. Just on the previous page to the headline ambitions, we're looking at the IT provision, maximising the use of digital technology. Obviously, you know, they've been, having very large macro systems for NHS provision and other services, can result in some very complicated technologies to be required, and some of those have not had a happy outcome in the past, not only in NHS, but in other departments as well. So how are we, how, how, how is the strategy going to make sure that we deliver, you know, value for money on that, and get the best technology we can at the time, and also make it usable for the end user and deliver the, deliver the outcomes we need in terms of people, people's health improvements? And just on the headline ambitions, how close are we to the care appointments received in two weeks for primary healthcare for GPs? Thank you.
I think this goes back to the fact that separate documents make it a little fragmented, but actually, we've got a partnership approach to digital work, so Derek, if you remember, we get to integrated care partnership meeting later, integrated care partnership strategy, there's an able around digitals and labour around data that we're working collectively on, and part of that, the part of those five crosscutting themes is trying to pull the different elements of the, of the three strategies together, and through that partnership work, we need to do, as you said, the history within the NHS around some of the digital kind of platforms we have, isn't always steeped in glory in that sense, so we do need to work collectively, making sure we have the right systems going forward, and the right kind of joint approach to what we're looking to do. The budget just announced, thankfully, has some money, a certain significant amount of money attached to IT, digital, but it's how we actually maximise that locally is going to be key, and that partnership approach is fascinating. In terms of the, the specifics around the primary care two week, I can get back to that, I don't have that information to hand.
Well, I was just, I wonder if Derek wanted to make a comment here, because together, I think, unlike many other systems, we're actually doing some, some, some work and trying to understand where we are with digital, what we've got together across Lincolnshire, where we, where we go next with it, and Derek, you're our, our lead officer for that, jointly between county council and NHS on, on that.
Thanks, John. I think there's probably three bits I'd pull out. The first one would be the budget announcement, which obviously, we haven't got the detail of, it's going to go down the NHS side, and obviously, we'll need to incorporate into the strategic approach we take. The second is that the programme under the Integrated Care Partnership Strategy is digital and technology, and it's two discrete things that are linked together. So the, the digital component is how we use digital services so that people can access information better, connect with care and health services better, and, and support themselves and be supported to get better outcomes. And then the technology is where we can use pieces of kit, other forms of technology to facilitate better health and care services as well. What we're doing there is, we are doing a rapid piece of discovery work that's at a system level, but also, a specific piece of that is around adult care and how we can use digital and technology to, to support people who are in need of adult care services. And then we'll, we'll come back via the Integrated Care Partnership approach to update on that and, and take it forwards. I absolutely accept, having worked in this space for 20 odd years, that we've not covered ourselves in glory for, for a number of complicated reasons. I think if you look at the NHS app and the development and COVID passports, it is possible to do. So I think if we focus on that as a positive, obviously, it was a challenging situation, but, but the role of digital and the NHS app has, has really grown, that, that is the expectation that we'll carry on with a, a standardised approach, rather than trying to tailor lots and lots of different approaches and connect them up.
Thank you, Derek. Anyone else? Yep, okay, thank you. If we can move to the actions required, we're asked to note the following, that the requirement for the NHS to develop their joint forward plan, the requirement to involve the Health and Wellbeing Board in preparing or revising the joint forward plan, and that the Health and Wellbeing Board is asked to provide an opinion on whether the joint forward plan takes proper account of joint local health and wellbeing strategies. Can I ask for a proposal, please? Thank you councillor Bockett. Can I ask for a second, please? Thank you councillor Gray. All those in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? Thank you, that's agreed. We now move on to item 7B, which is the Healthy Weight Priority, the annual update. This item was circulated as part of the Agenda Pack pages 373 to 394, that, it, it was the previous document, there were all those pages, so blame the NHS, it's not the, and not LCC, it's the NHS, Pete, isn't it? And this, this item provides the board with an update on the Healthy Weight Priority. I'm going to invite Andy Fox, consultant in public health, to present this item, and then we will ask you questions after, Andy. Thank you.
Of course, thank you, Chair. Good afternoon all. So as discussed, this is an update on the Healthy Weight Priority. The board will be well aware that the issue of the, the weight of the population, that the proportion who are at a healthy weight and the proportion who are at an unhealthy weight is complex, it's multifaceted. Basically, the world that we've built makes it really easy for people to, to gain weight. So when bringing together a partnership to address that, there's obviously a, a wide scope that we can take. So this paper doesn't set out the entirety of the discussions that are underway, really what it looks to do is just bring, highlight some successes, some progress that the group as the partnership has made over the last year, and also, we've been asked to articulate some challenges as well, so you've got some detail on that. Just to summarise the content of the paper for you then, obviously, this is an issue for Lincolnshire, it's an issue nationally and internationally. Lincolnshire is of a similar range in terms of the proportion of adults and children that are at an unhealthy weight from the national position, but slightly higher in most estimates. And usually, some of the lower level estimates that include our districts are, they're not normally statistically reliable, but they do normally have estimates, and Lincolnshire, as usual, has some of the highest estimates in the country at a district level. So it is something, as I say, that is a, a challenge nationally, there is no area that has this nailed, obviously, because it is, as I say, that multifaceted sort of network of causes that, that produces these effects in the population. So it's an issue for us, as I say. What we've been doing, well, there's some successes to point out. I think having started up the Healthy Weight Partnership again, having, obviously, it was previously running in COVID, or prior to COVID, we've brought together some of those key strategies. those key strategic level actors. I'm really pleased that we've got colleagues from the ICB, from wider NHS trusts, but also from schools, the voluntary community sector, we've got children's services colleagues, district council colleagues. So it is truly strategic in the sense that it spans the majority of the public sector and VCS sector organisations, with trying to build some links into the private sector as well. And actually, we've been aware that we need to have that operational focus as well. So one of the first actions has been to convene an operational partnership which sits below the group, reports up, so we've attached terms of reference for you there to see. And that's actually a really valuable forum for anybody practising in this area essentially, or who has an impact upon, potential impact upon this, to come together to share knowledge, expertise and how they're using their resource. And there's already been some gains we've seen from that with joint delivery of training, coordination of health promotion campaigns, for example. So positive to see, proper strategic and operational joint working in Lincolnshire. I wouldn't say we've got it all sorted yet, there's plenty more work to be done, but we are taking that joined up approach for this issue, which I think is really important. Couple of other key areas to highlight, see, really pleased with One U Lincolnshire. Our Integrated Lifestyle Service continues to outperform national benchmarks and key targets in service delivery. So, you know, the National Institute for Health and Care Excellence's nice mandate that for a programme like this, 30% of people should lose at least 5% of their body weight. We are way over that in Lincolnshire. The people that come to our programme, over 40% lose that, you know, and 30% is like standard for, you know, a high quality service. So we are exceeding it. And of course, we've been delivering a child and family weight management service by One U Lincolnshire for the last couple of years. And that's, again, it's innovative, we're piloting that approach, testing to see if it works. But again, I'm really pleased with it and early information we're getting through suggests that 76% of the children that complete it are reducing their BMI. So again, as I always say, apologies Chair if you've heard this before, people say nothing works for childhood obesity. Actually, lots of things work, it's the challenge that we have is to find the thing that we can do with our resources that work the best, that are most cost effective and relevant to Lincolnshire's population, that's what we're trying here. We will obviously keep delivering that as long as the current contract of the ILS runs, which has now, we've had agreement to extend that for another year. And then from 2025, from summer 2025, we will deliver a recommission service. So the recommissioning conversations are now underway, many people will be feeding into that in this room and in others. We'll make sure that we have a proposal which, again, builds on the success of integrated lifestyle service delivery. And yeah, really keen to make sure that is still one of the sort of pillars of us addressing these issues in Lincolnshire. So I don't want to keep talking because I will dominate the conversation as ever on this issue. But we've also just some feedback in the report about the Holiday Activities and Food Programme, which is a really important centrally funded government programme where we've been able to really have a direct impact upon children and families who maybe aren't getting enough physical activity and maybe aren't eating healthy food. So really pleased to see that roll out so successfully in Lincolnshire, long may it continue. And just some of the challenges we've highlighted there, very quickly. As ever, with this issue, with the issue of healthy weight, it is people who live in more deprived communities that tend to have higher weight, higher rates of unhealthy weight in children and adults. And of course, those are people who will be less able to just, you know, buy gym membership or buy a fancy road bike and just change their lifestyle. So those issues are still a challenge for us to address. We do want to have that conversation as we recommission the Integrated Lifestyle Service about, can we change the model to better address the higher barriers to changing your lifestyle that people from those communities have? And we'll be having that conversation and looking at how best to do that. We're also highlighting, as ever, when people are on a programme, they finish that programme, there's a drop off of support. So we want to have some, do some further work to look at how best to safeguard people to try and embed those lifestyle changes. And as ever, we want to highlight a few sort of existing gaps in service provision, which will be looked at in forthcoming work programme. And I've had discussion with Sandra Williamson, who's John's team and directs this issue at this area at ICB. And she's confirmed they will be looking at specialist weight management services in Lincolnshire again, so tier three and four, which are currently not delivered in Lincolnshire, they're delivered out of the county. And that work will be beginning from quarter one, 24, 25. So there's some work that will, that wider system will be looking at. So that's the update. I'm happy to take any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Andy. And just to reiterate a couple of things that Andy's touched on there. At our, I think it was our last Healthy Weight Meeting, I've got to repeat this because I was absolutely intrigued. We had a presentation from, a couple from One U Lincolnshire, wasn't it, facilitators, that we think we know ways of doing things. And yet, I was absolutely staggered that, and I think they were too when they first did it, inviting people by text message, names and numbers that come off the GP obesity list, inviting those people to come to a session to look at their weight management, expecting a dozen or so to turn up. And I think you've got it here, wasn't it, 120 in the first session? And it was the fact that they'd been invited by text. And I would suggest that that's not something that we automatically would think would work, but it actually proved more popular and worked better than perhaps the traditional letter or phone call or whatever. So, and likewise, the Holiday Activities Food Programme, if you get the chance to ever go and see a session that's taking place in any of the schools, please do so. Because of our children's services and they're all over it like a hawk, the quality of the food that is produced for those young people, and they're all, well, I was going to say it's always a healthy hot meal, it's always a healthy meal. Obviously, if it's a boiling hot summer, then maybe it's not a hot meal. But just go and have a look and see the sort of standard and quality that these young people are receiving and probably wouldn't be getting if they were at home. So thank you for that, Andy. Any questions from anyone? Councillor Boaket?
It's not a question, but I hate when you say gym, because it's a ridiculous word, I think. You can have, Richard's laughing, but if you're in a deprived area with no money, the last thing you're going to do is join a gym. And I hate it when doctors sign up you to the gym, because once that programme's finished, you're not going to go again. So it just really annoys me. The HAV programme is fantastic, I want to see more of those, more getting families into schools and teaching them with their children to learn how to cook. Because at the end of the day, we stopped teaching kids how to cook, I mean, my day, many, many years ago, you know, you had your cooking things, even with my children, they learnt to cook at school, they also learnt to cook at home as well. But I just think it's getting back to the basics, isn't it? And it isn't about going to the gym, it's about going to the park, isn't it? You don't have to have an expensive bike, you can go to the park and have a football and getting all these low key programmes going again, which I think us working with health and the districts and our voluntary sector, you know, more and more we can introduce for not a lot of pounds, which will make a huge amount of money. But please don't mention that word again, thank you.
Just to come back on that, yeah, I won't, I agree, I'm intimidated going to a gym and I'm a skinny public health consultant. So I do completely agree with everything you've raised, councillor, thank you.
Andy, councillor Rawlings?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just a general question about sort of infant health. Now, obviously, anecdotally and for research basis, I think that it's quite clear that children that are breastfed are at a great advantage regarding their diet going forward in terms of what the palate is used to, and then you don't get sugar hits and everything later on. So I just think that, you know, starting early is the key, is it not? And because once those habits have been established, you know, you're fighting a bit of an uphill battle.
Again, no, excellent points, completely agree. Very important that as part of the Healthy Weight Partnership, we do have input from the midwifery team and the Lindas team, 19 Children's Health Service, who have a big focus on breastfeeding. Actually, we haven't mentioned family hubs as part of this because it's not directly this work, but obviously the extra investment the governor putting into children centres does touch on these. And obviously, increasing uptake of breastfeeding is one of the key goals of family hubs and children centres and always has been.
Thank you too. Thanks, Andy. I think there's some great work going on in this space, I really must say and thank everybody for their input and taking this forward. I must say, when I talk about the health of the people of Lincolnshire out and about, including senior NHS England people and others across the Midlands region, when I quote the obesity rates for our children, you know, those going to junior school and then secondary school, I mean, it is staggering. So I think my question is more about, you know, we've got a very, very significant problem here, haven't we, across the county? And it's variable across the county, but in the round, it is a very serious health concern. And we all know where, you know, excess weight leads to all sorts of health problems a bit further down the track, quite often not very far further down the track. So my question is, is the extent to which we're feeling confident that within the totality of resources that we've got, yes, and that's financial resources, but it's our networks, it's our different expertise, it's our colleagues in mental health services, children's services, Active Lincolnshire, the third network, district councils, you know, whether we feel that we have generally gathered together in sort of one movement, if that's the right terminology to use with this, all of the resources that we could, we can, they're at our disposal to draw in. I mean, we can always do more if somehow we had much more coming in from outside, but just with what we've got in Lincolnshire, how are we feeling about that?
I mean, I'll gladly respond, excellent question. You know, you could write a PhD on that subject, really. I think the simple answer I give is I'm really comfortable that the people we've got around the table are the right people, but there will never be too many people, if you see what I mean, feeding into this agenda, because you could cast the net as wide as you possibly can get involved with, you know, many private sector companies, for example, who are far less engaged in that space, will have social and community responsibility funds of some kind that they will be looking to put into this space. There is, it is one of the key issues facing, health risks facing most of the Western world. It is one of those issues that everybody is aware of, so there's lots going on, which we don't capture here and can't capture, so that the complexity and scope is potentially huge. I think the, what I would say as the approach that we need to take and understand is that there is so much going on, a lot of it which will be effective for somebody somewhere, as I say. The issue is a lot of what's being done historically and currently might unintentionally increase some of the inequalities that we've seen. And actually, my, one of my most frightening statistics in sort of public health is the fact that actually, childhood obesity has been going down in year six boys, but only in the least deprived quintile, but it has been going down. In the most deprived quintile, it's been going up sharply over the life of the National Child Measurement Programme, which means this stuff is working for somebody, but also for those that need the most help, it's getting worse at a far higher rate than it's getting better for those. So actually, I think approaching this through an inequalities lens and focusing on, you know, I think, I don't want to talk too much about this, but clearly we have a mandate to make sure that if we're offering proactive and preventative care services like the Integrated Lifestyle Service, we are not unintentionally increasing inequalities by having even barriers to entry, essentially. So everybody faces the same challenge and therefore those who have more resource, more self-efficacy can overcome that hurdle easier. What we need to do is intelligently design services that understand the kind of challenges people face in taking the opportunity, and I'm talking about proactive and preventative care services, and that actually are designed to give more help to those who need more help to access them. And I think that's work we're driving through, again, through Sandra's work, through the Health Inequalities work and through now the Prevention and Health Inequalities Executive Group. So I think we're baby steps in bringing all of that together, but we are going in the right direction. But yeah, I would welcome far more support and interest in this area. I think it is one of the key requirements for us as a system to really build momentum in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Andy actually touched on what I was going to mention, I was going to mention the family hubs and the children's centres. I visited the children's centre in Horncastle just before Christmas and there was a session going on on healthy cooking on a budget. And I was told by this team there that they had to put on extra sessions because of how popular they were and siblings were coming in, they were teaching the older siblings to cook too. But also the daycare centres, in Horncastle we have the Wong Daycare Centre, and there the residents don't just cook, they grow all their own produce, they grow their own produce in the grounds, et cetera. And again, they're passing that on to their friends and their families. So we shouldn't underestimate what super work is happening through our, the daycare centres and the children and family centres with regard to this matter.
Thank you. Just coming back to John's question, at a macro level, at a Lincolnshire level, I think the answer is no, we're not doing enough. I think we could probably never do enough when you look at the rising tide that we are facing. What, the comparison I would make is the Prime Minister's announced a smoke free generation. We need that sort of approach when it comes to healthy weight. We need a healthy weight generation model and it'll overlap with physical activity as a, really a golden bullet in terms of significantly delivering a lot of the things that Pete's just outlined in the 300 slides for the NHS Forward Plan. A lot of that will be delivered if we maintain a healthy weight and everybody meets physical activity recommendations. But of course, that's a massively complicated thing to do, as Andy's just touched on a few of the areas. So I think, I think at a country level and probably at an established market economy level, every developed country needs to look at that golden bullet that is a healthy weight generation.
Thank you, Derek. Okay, thank you. If there are no more questions, then we will, oh, Hugo.
Sorry I was late. No, I mean, well, obviously, I've been involved on this subject and take quite passionate about this subject. The one thing that does sort of, if we don't watch it, Public Health England, I get this understanding, it wants to know, not Lincolnshire, but nationally, wants to understand the makeup of everything, scientifically driven, proven and everything else. But in its quest for that, the obesity problem has just exploded out of all proportion. And all I keep hearing is how they keep trying to identify everything. And actually, my view is, you've got to make a start. And actually, the fact that we are with the children's a good thing, but we can't be rigid in this. You know, the people that are in effect in deprivation areas, I mean, their whole outlook is completely different to like most people in this rooms. Their parents might not be at home when they get back to cook a decent meal because they're on night shifts. There's all sorts of issues about that. But I think what we have to do is we make a start, but we have to start and look at ways in which we really can try different things. And somehow, we've got to feed that into the system and not just be regimented here. And I think that it's too easy to get regimented, but we are, we're working where it should be, which is children's, and that's the really good thing. And the parents will tie in on that, but we've got to basically start to think slightly differently on how we really work in those areas of deprivation long term. And I do think, and I never used to be a big believer, modern medicines and pills and lotions and potions will actually have to feed into the system. And I think that actually, the more I've looked into that, the more I think we have to pay attention to that and actually let those spits feed into the system. We might have to recommend them, because reality is, we can't do it through mentally addressing it ourselves. So I think the point really is, we've got to be flexible and we're going to have to just do more pilot schemes to try and break down this real big barrier.
Completely agree with you. Councillor Wright?
Thank you, John. I was going to say something in the next one, I probably still will, but seeing as Hugo and other people have mentioned the word deprivation, it just gets me that... Hugo and other people have mentioned the word deprivation, it just gets me that whilst we have a problem in deprived areas, that we need to also look at other questions, especially for people that aren't in deprived areas. Now, a question I'd ask is that whilst a person may see the weight as a problem, while the NHS as a body sees that as a problem, we see it because the service need and what, you know, what goes into this, I would ask whether GPs actually see it as a problem. And what I'd say to you is, if you're deemed as a person who can maybe afford to do something about it, you're not deprived, but you might have a minor health issue. So let's for instance say, somebody told me this always, am I talking about myself? But if you are a walker and everybody knows, well, the public health group know, a fairly good way of keeping your weight under control, staying healthy, especially if you walk fairly fast, but if you've got, for instance, a knee problem that's recurring and you go to your GP, because the one thing that's holding you back on really, really doing something about it is that knee problem, and they just say to you, you don't want that knee replaced in for another five, 10 years, you don't want to do that at your age, you go, well, what do I do about my weight then? Because the one thing to do is walk, but walking is disrupted by, and so you do wonder whether at the GP level, and we know they're under pressure with everything else, but you do wonder whether they see the tie into everything else and is that a missing link? And should we just concentrate on deprivation or look across the whole piece? Because being able to afford to do something about it doesn't mean you're actually going to be able to do it.
I think you're absolutely right, because I think personally the point there would be, the more that we can do to help ourselves, then the loss, the less we are going to impinge on the services that are out there for those that do need the support. Martin.
Thank you, and I think this has been a really interesting debate. I mean, for me, one of the things that has really come out is that we commission a lot of services which are clearly very effective, and for the people that they, that go through those services, the impact can potentially be life-changing. But I suppose I was, I was looking at the numbers and thinking that with, you know, with a couple of the services, you know, if we've, if we've reached 1% of the population that needs those services, or that, you know, people who are overweight or very overweight, if we've reached even 1%, we're probably doing quite, quite well. And I suppose I was picking up on one of the things that Andy said earlier about us living in an obesogenic environment, and I suppose it sort of made me think about the importance of a public health approach to this, that we can respond to people being overweight and being obese, and we can provide services and we can give guidance and the like, and there is clearly a really important place for that. The public health approach would suggest that we should be looking at the causes and seeing, well, what is it, you know, if we, if we have created, you know, our society has created an obesogenic environment, well, what is it that we can do to stop it being an obesogenic environment? And B, I'm not good enough with my Latin, so I can't work out what the opposite of an obesogenic environment would.
Salutagenic.
Salutagenic.
Promoting it.
Oh, I knew the DVH would, but, but, but thinking about, well, what are the things that we can do to the environment, which, which potentially might, you know, might sometimes be a better use than some of the money we spend on services for a very, very small number of people, very small proportion, but to change the environment so that it does make, make things easier. And, you know, that can be, you know, potentially even things like putting bus stops either a bit further apart or a little bit nearer together, depending on what the aim of the audience are, but those sorts of things that I think sometimes can be fairly small changes, but can help potentially thousands of people to take that little bit more activity, to avoid the sweets that call out to them like sirens. And so I think, I wonder whether, whether we should be doing a little bit more in terms of that side of things and recognizing that it's, you know, the chain of causality is a bit, a bit longer and it's a bit harder to measure, but actually might make a bigger difference to people rather than having a service that deals with them when they've already probably made themselves really unwell through, through being too, you know, being too heavy.
I think it's a very valid point. Thank you. Okay, no more questions. We will then move to the, we're asked to note the content of the report and that partners continue to work to contribute to delivering solutions to the challenges raised. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Thank you, that is agreed. Thank you, Andy. We now move on to the other update, which is the physical activity update, and over to you, Emma. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. And I think it's actually really helpful that these two items are next to each other because actually a huge amount of that debate is exceptionally relevant to some of the things I've identified here in terms of physical activity. I'm not going to read the paper, you've got that in front of you, but I was just going to sum up by actually saying it's really interesting when you look at the shared system ambition within the health and wellbeing strategy in terms of the focus on prevention agenda, inequalities in access to services and opportunities and the need to take collective action. And all of those three system priorities for the Health and Wellbeing Board are entirely aligned with where we need to be and where we are working in terms of physical activity and the kind of framework that underpins that is Let's Move Lincolnshire, currently chaired by Ian Fitch, the NK Chief Executive. Some of the points that I was going to make interesting, the environment is a key one in terms of actually how can we consider influence around planning decisions, around street lighting, around, yeah, whether it's placement of bus stops, whether it's cycle lanes, et cetera, to enable people to walk and cycle more safely and more frequently. Because whilst the formal provision of physical activity is still important, actually, if we really want to make that change at scale in a similar way to how we were talking about obesity, a lot of this is about enabling people to live their daily lives more actively. So I think there's a significant opportunity for Lincolnshire, and it's come up in this meeting before, hasn't it, around the green and blue spaces, for example, and actually how do we make those more accessible, more available, more relevant for people to use our green and blue spaces and to make it safe and easier for people to walk as they're going about their business and about their daily lives. Another reflection is actually the sector and facilities that are available, so we've had some great successes, some of which I've talked about in the paper in terms of securing investment for things like play zones, which are multi-sport facilities that can be located in communities, as well as programs like opening school facilities that enable schools to open their facilities outside of school hours for community use. But at the same time, we are seeing and hearing increasingly a lot of the smaller providers and the charitable provision really struggling with what started as Covid, what went on to being the cost of living crisis and what is now the energy crisis, and actually organizations just saying, we're struggling to turn the lights on and to keep the doors open. And at the same time, some of the public leisure provision is equally having quite significant challenges in terms of understanding how it can continue to fund swimming pools. So I think there's a potential cliff edge actually in terms of the availability of provision, and we know that that needs to be relevant to the local population, we know it needs to be spread across the community in the places where people are living, but those organizations are all facing challenges. And sometimes, and not exclusively, but we've started to have this conversation with colleagues in public health, sometimes unintentionally the commissioned services can put an additional strain on those smaller organizations, and certainly the way that funding is created puts a strain on them as well. And short-term funding, that actually we have to jump through quite a lot of hoops to access and then disappears after 12 weeks, just creates a tricky model. So we've already seen in other sectors, but BRIC, for example, the Building Resilience in Communities charity has just folded, gone into administration, and other charities are having quite a difficult time at the moment. So there's something there around the understanding how resilient the sector is in terms of the formal provision, at the same time as recognizing that if we can make better use of our environment and our natural assets, people can go about their lives more actively. And then the other point was around the place-based focus and place-based approach, and again, listening to some of the challenges around obesity and as we know in physical activity, when we try and do everything across the whole of Lincolnshire all of the time, we actually find we're spreading our resources quite thinly. So certainly from Sport England's perspective, there's likely to be opportunities to do more place-based work, which will give us the opportunity to essentially do a deep dive, and I think to do the really complex part of connecting all of these pieces of the system, because again, doing that at county level is challenging. It happens very much at a strategic level, but then there's the kind of, you know, messy middle as it's known, which is actually pulling together lots of organizations, lots of assets and lots of organizations from, yeah, public, private and the charitable sector. So actually, by working in place, we should be able to start to unpick some of those challenges and have a real focused effort in making a difference to health, to active environments, to the services that the schools and the other important components of that community can provide, and hopefully that will then give us learnings and examples of best practice that we can roll out in other areas. So some really positive opportunities coming up, but I think within the space of actually working in really complex systems and a challenging kind of economic environment as well.
Thank you, Emma. Out of interest, Sport England, what's their definition of place then? Because it depends on which organization you're with, it can vary.
It can, and it can vary with Sport England as well. Their previous investment has been everything from a county level to an MSOA area. Any new investment is highly unlikely to cover a whole county and is very likely to cover one or multiple MSOA areas, possibly a district, but then the important part of that is the learning, the understanding of the difference that that work has made and how that can be scaled up or rolled out. But yeah, chances are it would be an MSOA area or multiple.
Thank you. Any questions? councillor Boaket.
Thank you, Emma. Really interesting report. As you know, I've been trying to get some changing rooms for my football team in Wainfleet because we are a very, very deprived area, Wainfleet. I'm fortunate to live there because it's a fantastic place, but trying to get these facilities for the kids to carry on the football that we never, ever, ever have had in the 32 years that I've lived in Wainfleet, bearing in mind it is a town, it is so, so you have to go through so many hoops, and I've been trying now for two and a half years and still not got there. So there's lots of things I think we can still do out there, and it's only through my determination that I will get it done before I die. I've probably got another 20 years probably, but it is, it's so annoying that we will lose, we will lose, Richard's face, but we will lose football if we don't get these facilities because they cannot go on to 17 and 18 years football without changing facilities. So we've worked so hard to get there, and as you know, you know, you've been to see us, haven't you? And we've got the most fantastic football pitches, but just no changing rooms, and it's, but I've seen the school thing, I will contact the school to see if, we used to use their facilities, they stopped us when it went to an academy, but whether that could be a thing again. But it is hard work out there, so much money, but there's been thrown around, but hard to get into. That's my plea.
Yes, I think you're quite right. You make a really relevant point, that there's often money out there, but what they want you to spend it on and what you want to spend it on aren't necessarily one and the same thing, and that, that's the bit that, again, needs a bit of unpicking. councillor Gray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. councillor Wright earlier mentioned walks and walking, and it's often people don't know what's available in that area. The Lincolnshire Co-op, we all probably will know that they do wellbeing walks across the county. They have 78 volunteer-led walks every week across our county. In East Lindsay, we have 12, and I've been involved with that, with the group. The Co-op have nine community coordinators across the county who are working with these walking groups and these volunteers, et cetera. And so there's some great things happening there, but often residents don't know. I was recently talking to a colleague, a council colleague in Spalding about what happened with the Co-op, they had no idea these wellbeing walks were happening. So it's getting that message out there that there are lots of opportunities often, but people don't know about it. Because as I say, there's been a huge success of, with these walks in East Lindsay. You imagine 12 walks every week happening in East Lindsay just through being organized by that one organization and their volunteers.
Thank you. councillor Wright, I am so sorry.
That's okay. I'm always happy to listen to councillor Gray. Just a few, sorry, I've got my back to you. Few points. How do we improve place? It's design code and master planning, I'm afraid to say, but until the government actually mandates through the National Planning Policy Forum that we put more emphasis on making better place and who pays for it, then it's always going to be a problem. It's not down to planning committees, it's down to how, you know, how do we actually put it in place and where does the money come from to start with? But in some places, we are, as you probably know from Ian, we are, we are doing a little bit better. It's a shame to hear about Wainfleet, the Links FA should be paying for those because I spent many years child protection for Links FA, and you should have toilets, so. But my main, my main point on this, and I'm afraid, I'll use a film analogy, which I'm always getting in trouble for, but this is not Field of Dreams, and if you build it, it doesn't mean they'll come. You know, if we, I'm just a bit edgy about Sport England identifying areas of deprivation and thinking, if you put facilities there, then people will automatically use them. I mean, we've done some ward-based work before and we targeted wards, and we ended up having to fill the program with people from outside that ward, because the reality is, there's obviously, as Emma probably knows as well, is how do you get the people to engage? So if you look at it from those people that know about addiction and dependency, if they're not on that wheel of change in the right place to actually want to engage in physical activity because they know the benefits, then you're not going to get them to do it, no matter where you build the facilities or how much money you pump into an area. So I'd just, I'd like to see how Sport England are really going to do their analogy on where they think the money's going to benefit the area best, but how do, again, it's this joined up, who do we join up with? Who's going to put the referrals through? How are people going to get onto programs to pick up? councillor Boaket's point from earlier, that if you give people a gym program and it runs out, can they afford it? That's another. And I'd like to so much see, I know this from swimming and things like this, there's an awful lot to be done from community-based activity or buddying. Instead of paying for programs, buddy people up with buddy that can help them get across that stumbling block, that week 10 where they think, oh, really can't do this, how do we get past it? Because that is much more effective than chucking money at something.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for your comments. I think for points of clarification, Sport England place-based investment doesn't necessarily mean it's investment in new facilities. If there's a place where the community are saying, actually, no changing rooms is a real barrier to us, then you might find that that's part of the solution, but place-based investment is actually connecting so many of the conversations that have been going on around the room today, what are the Co-op Community Champions hearing, you know, where are the Mental Health Transformation Team, what do we understand about schools and education provision in the area? Where are the barriers in terms of the natural environment? Is it that there aren't enough streetlights and people are feeling too scared to walk alongside the river to get from A to B or just even to walk to work? So it's very much a systemic place-based approach to working, and it doesn't necessarily mean that there's going to be money, yeah, because you're absolutely right, just because we build a shiny new leisure center, it doesn't mean it's suddenly going to be filled with people. So it's, I just think the reassurance is actually it will help us as system partners think differently about the way that we're working together and all the different levers that various people in this room and beyond have got access to, and to just think differently about the ways that we're working. And some of the examples, you know, the work that you've done up at One NK, fabulous, thinking about how the health hub is now integrated within the leisure center. And so it's kind of how we can, yeah, learn and explore and do things differently to make it easier for those people to be more active as part of their daily lives, and it doesn't always have to be formal sport provision. And just to come back on councillor Gray's point around communication, absolutely, we hear that all the time, the biggest barrier is signposting. Where can people find information? We have the Let's Move Lincolnshire Activity Finder, it has all of the Co-op Health Walks on there, and we're now making it easier for people to access that by, I know Derek's got the connector support website here, but by having a widget on that website. So again, we're all trying to work better together and more smartly in terms of signposting residents to these points of information because it is a really critical part of the equation. It's not the only part, but it's a really important part. And you're right, hearing from, whether it's a friend, you know, a trusted colleague, somebody that you actually can build a relationship with who says, well, why don't you think about doing X, Y or Z? That's the most valuable form of communication and signposting.
Thank you. Just for your information, one of our assistance directors of adults is actually, coaches a football team at Saksalbe, and they've just done very well, and I think they're nearly either at the semi-finals or the finals. But actually, talking to him about it, he did say, it's, I'm a volunteer and it's hard work. It really is hard work. You know, there isn't much support out there and there's very little backup, and most people just want to drop their kids off and leg it back home or something. But I think, forget the sport element, that half the thing, most, I mean, wherever I go, I mean, I see people running, exercising, and I think the more sort of affluent you are and the more time you've got, the more chance you'll do it. Time is of the essence, especially in working people. But actually, for those that are not in shape, to get going is the fundamental barrier to any form of sport. any form of sport. And when you're big, I mean, I haven't run for the last three, four months and I know I've put on a few more pounds and when I go running, my God, I'm carrying extra weight, you know, and you know it, I feel it. But it's sort of start off small, start off short. But actually, the problem is I look round the village and actually people that aren't in fit shape, they don't really know where to go to start to get that barrier going. And that's the problem, it is the biggest barrier. And I lost my dog and I have to say I don't walk as much, I lose all contact with the village and I'm going to have to go and get another one. But it's little things like that that really make a big difference. But I think it's how we break those barriers because it's, you know what, you're not going to turn that guy that's unhealthy or girl unhealthy and become the greatest footballer. But they actually perhaps want to do a bit of football, they want to do a bit of cycling and mix it all up. And what we try and do is focus that you're going to become the next athlete or the next footballer. But actually, I'm one of those people, do different sports all the time, but it's get started.
Thank you, Hugo. Martin.
Yeah, thank you. And I wanted first to say I really welcome the report and I think there's clearly an awful lot of excellent work being, being done here. And I thought really just sort of building on some of the comments that have been, have been made, I think that it's underlining the vital need to sort of segment the population in terms of understanding where people are and what we, and the different things that we need to do and to make possible for people in different, different places. So the comment that was made about, you know, one of my assistant directors who's a volunteer, how do we make it easier for people to volunteer to do that kind of thing so they don't feel, oh, I'm carrying this heavy weight and actually it's something I can't, I can't keep doing? How do we help the people who have a bit of physical activity, the footballers that councillor Boaket was talking about, have a bit of physical activity but to keep it up? And then picking up councillor Wright's point about the people who aren't doing anything at all and they need, you know, they may not be aware that something, there's something there, but actually often, even if they knew there was something there, there's that sense of I haven't, I haven't got the, it's not for me, it's, I'm not in a place where I would do it even if I knew that it was there. And I suppose it's for me that, that recognition that people are in different places mentally and that we, that we need quite a sophisticated approach. And I'm, I'm sure that Emma is well aware of this and I'm, I'm saying things that are blinding the obvious to her, but I suppose it's that, that recognition that a multifaceted approach is going to be appropriate. And it's not simply, let's have more sports facilities because that will work for some people and won't work for, for others. But I suppose the, the people that I'm most concerned about are the people who, particularly in deprived areas, who are very, very inactive and there's nothing at the moment that's going to make them feel that they can become active. And those are the people who will be, you know, filling, filling the NHS hospitals and like and filling adult social care in due course. And I'm keen that we, you know, what can we do with them so that they can have a good life?
I think the conversation very much comes back to the argument about having a, a fit and healthy generation sort of approach that we talked about with a smoke-free generation approach. And there's a whole range of different aspects to that. So another analogue would be our understanding now of theories of change. So when you look at people who want to quit smoking, we've got an evidence base that's really strong now about pharmacotherapy, so drug, drug therapy as well as motivational support and psychological support. And that's the, the best chance you've got to, to quit. You can help people who don't want to quit to quit, but it's incredibly expensive and incredibly difficult. And there is something about making sure that for those people who want to increase physical activity in one way or another, it might be they want to play for a Premier League football club or they might just want to walk further, then, then that's where we can target and, and make quite a big change. And the very specifics there coming back to what we commissioned from One New Lincolnshire as part of an integrated lifestyles services, it is based on motivational interviewing, it is based on psychology, it is based on people being referred into or accessing the service because of changes in their life that have made them think. And then we support that through behaviour change, through, through psychology and try to support that change. And that's why we're seeing better outcomes. But we need to scale it up and we need to go back to that, the, the opposite of an obesogenic environment, a salutogenic environment, a health promoting environment. But, but that's obviously a, a challenge for a future government as well as for us at a local level.
Okay, thank, thank you for that. And I think certainly on a personal level, it's just that consistency, isn't it, that as a civilisation, we've got to have a consistent message. And I think we all start off well with the young people. But if I'm really honest, there's somehow schools, we, we miss our young people in our schools that we're, we're not able to probably get into all of our schools on a consistent basis as much as we probably would like to or ought to. And then of course by then, bad behaviours have set in, i.e. sit, sit on your backside, et cetera. But, but it's, yeah, we're not going to cure it overnight, are we? Okay. Can I take you to the actions required, which are on page 395? And that is to support a place-based approach to physical activity, to consider what capacity and capabilities across the ICP can be levered in to support this approach and to note the contents of the report and the other bits and pieces. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Thank you, that's agreed. Okay, I think the next few agenda items, he's smiling already, are items for noting. So Professor Ward, would you like to raise any points in your item for noting?
I would not apart from just if anybody would like to discuss any of the contents of the annual report, I'd be very happy to do so outside of this meeting.
Would anybody like to ask any questions on Professor Ward's annual report 2023? Looks like everyone else has heard it a few times as well. Thank you. But we do have to just agree that, so have we noted the report? Please raise your hands. Anyone against? Thank you, that's agreed. You have a further report, which is for noting, which is your health protection annual report. I don't think we've seen this before, have we?
It does come every year because we, we, yeah, we put in place a governance mechanism because we have a health protection board as outlined in, in the report, as well as a local health resilience partnership that John and I co-chair. And the two together really provide the assurance across the wider health protection function. And we put in place four or five years ago to make sure that we report through somewhere and the Health and Wellbeing Board was the most sensible place to do so. So it's to receive and to give assurance to the board that we keep a very close eye on what is a complicated and complex landscape around here.
Thank, thank you for that. Are there any comments or questions for, for Derek? Okay, thank you, thank you Derek. Can everyone raise their hands if they're in agreement? Anyone disagreeing? No, thank you, that is agreed. We now move on to item 8C, which is the Better Care Fund update, which I think, believe you, Martin, are going to present.
Yes, thank you, it falls to me this time. So members of the board will be aware that it is the Health and Wellbeing Board that has the formal responsibility to sign off all of the plans and the reports about the Better Care Fund. Because it's a national scheme, almost invariably, the sign-offs from the board come retrospectively because nationally we have deadlines that are set to us and they take no account, I mean, there are 153 Health and Wellbeing Boards across the country, so it's not terribly surprising that they can't, they can't align the, the reporting times to our meetings. So we had to do an update, which we had to submit by the 9th of February, which we did, but we're therefore having to bring it. Hopefully the Health and Wellbeing Board will be satisfied with what we did in your name just over a month ago. Key points, we've had to provide some updates on spend and activity across the schemes. It's worth noting that all of the schemes are within their, within their planned expenditure. We have no specific implementation issues. We are expecting that there'll be updates, the reporting process required for the next financial year and that therefore what the odds are that we'll need to bring a revised version of the plan back to the Health and Wellbeing Board shortly, but we haven't had the guidance for that. We are on track to meet target for three out of the five metrics and we're looking to address the, the two where we're not meeting the target, which is around admissions, avoidable admissions from care homes and those who have dementia, Parkinson and other chronic conditions. And so we are looking at what we can do there. There's a number of, of highlights from programmes that are funded through the Better Care Fund, just to pick out a couple. We have a, a single point of contact for healthcare professionals to navigate the admission avoidance pathways. One of the things that's become clear is that our admission avoidance arrangements are quite varied and sometimes a little complex. And so the fact that we're needing to provide help for people to, to, to find their way along them, I think is, is perhaps a bit of an issue, but we, you know, we are doing this work and it is, it's, it's addressing an issue, but I'm not sure it's at the moment going to be resolving it. So there'll be further work for us to, to do. And we are expanding the, the re-ablement service and a number of other services related to that to enable people to, to go home sooner with support so that they are able to recover more quickly, maintain their independence for, to a greater extent and for longer, and therefore both have a better quality of life and not need to come back into, into services. And then we've also been expanding the programme of active recovery beds. So there are currently 70 of those beds and they have a very good track record in terms of the, the, the level of recovery and re-ablement of the people who are going through those beds so that they are, they're not just being put, put for a time being into a bed in the hope that they'll recover, they are in a bed with active recovery around them. And it is clear from the evaluation that this is making a significant impact on people's lives. And we have just recently agreed an extension of that programme into the next financial year, given the success with which it has delivered over the course of, of this year. So really just asking the, the board's approval of what we submitted about six weeks ago.
Thank you, Martin. Before I ask if there's any questions at all, can I just, a small point which if you would take back to Paul, if you notice on page, I think 484 is a, is a good example. Can you see the graphs? There's two, two graphs, they're unrelated, but it's just that we've got for one year, for 2223, we've got it red, but then we swap the colours round, for 2223, it's then blue for the following year. Can we just have the consistency, please? I know it's only a silly little point, but thank you, that, that would be helpful. Any questions from anyone at all, please? No, okay, so therefore can I go to the action required, which is to note the, review the 2325 quarter to BCF report? All in favour, please raise your hands. Anyone against? No, thank you, that's agreed. We move on to the, the log, again, that is purely for noting. Are we all agreed? Please raise your hands. Anyone against? Thank you. And finally, the forward plan, again, is for noting. Please, if there's anything that you would like to put on the forward plan, contact Alison and she will make arrangements. Otherwise, again, can we just note it? And all in favour, please raise your hands. Anyone against? Okay, thank you. That concludes the Health and Wellbeing Board meeting. Would you now like a 10-minute comfort break, coffee break before we move on to the ICP? Or have we got a time to?
We have to start the meeting at quarter to.
At quarter to? Oh, so we've got a 15-minute coffee break and comfort break and see you back here at quarter to. Thank you.